Okay, is everybody ready?
Yep.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead and get started. The Monday, April 27, 2020 Common Council Meeting is now in session. Uh, we are coming to you via live Teams, uh, also on Facebook Live and Access Channel 99. Thank you for, uh, helping Common Council Clerks for setting that up and running that. Um, due to the executive order, Indiana Governor Holcomb, we're allowed to legally have this virtual meeting, Common Council Meeting, um, uh, via Microsoft Teams. Uh, that is a free downloadable app, as most of you know who's online, but please share that with other people who wants to participate or hear what we're doing publicly. We, um, we will be hearing from the mayor tonight. This is, uh, the only issue with virtual meetings on this, um, and the executive order, legally, we can have it without a public input. Uh, talking to most common council members, they are pretty concerned that we continue to do this, um, without public input. So hopefully, as we get, uh, finished with this coronavirus, we get past it, we can go back to our normally scheduled meetings, uh, with public input. So, huh, with that said, uh, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Uh, Ms. Jones, would you do roll call, please?
Yes. Can any, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Uh-oh. Cookies are gone.
Councilmember Davis? Is, is Councilmember Davis present?
He is not on yet, Don.
Okay. Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Okay. Councilmember Warner? Councilmember Teschka?
Yep.
He's, he's, okay. Um, Councilmember Nogoski? Councilmember Nogoski? Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
I'm present.
Okay. Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Okay, I had seven responded and two have not responded yet. So as of right now, it's two that are absent.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Um, Graham, would you-
Uh, join in. Do they have to be accessed, Graham or Bianca? Do you guys have to let them in?
Um, we were, we are monitoring the board of attendees and, um, we will notify them as a point of information, both Clerk Jones and, uh, Chair Scott, that, uh, that both, um, uh, Councilmember Niesgotsky and Councilmember Davis will join the meeting at an inappropriate time-
Sheila is, I'm sorry to interrupt, Sheila is in the meeting. She was just on mute. Hey.
Okay.
She may be away from her, uh, microphone, but, um, we're not sure. Yeah, she's on mute. Mm-hmm.
Sorry, President Scott.
Oh, Henry is, uh-
Yeah, I see Henry.
Ms. Jones, would you do the roll call for, uh, Mr. Davis and Ms. Nogoski again, please?
Okay. Um, Councilmember Davis?
Uh, Henry's here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Nogoski? Okay. I'll just, I'll keep watching out for her.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk.
Mm-huh.
Uh, Mr. Sparks, would you please, uh, scroll up? Thank you. Um, we, we'll move to special business, uh, entertaining motion to suspend the rules in order to defer, uh, the privilege of the floor to subsequent council meeting.
Some move.
I'm, what, what are you asking motion for?
Sorry about that, couldn't hit the mute. Uh, to suspend the privilege of the floor to the next council meeting or when we can physically be available.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davis and Ms. Tomas Morgan for the, the second. All in favor? Roll call, Ms. Jones.
Um, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye. Say it now.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Councilmember Nogoski?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Um, Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Okay, just to note that all council members are present and for, uh, the vote to suspend the rules, all council members voted aye. So we have nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to note that we do not have any business under Committee of the Whole, bills for third reading and bills for first reading. Um, at this time, um, I'd like to welcome, um, the mayor's office is here. Uh, we have, I think, uh, Jordan Gathers, uh, Casey Gergli, and Mayor James Mueller for update on COVID-19 and other city-related updates. This time, what we'll do is both Mayor, go ahead and do his presentation, and then, once he does his presentation, we'll go down the line, uh, with questions. So, Mr. Mayor?
President Scott, before we move forward, I'm sorry, this is Henry. Um, are we up on the internet live?
Uh, I'll defer that to the clerk's office.
Because I'm looking for it right now, I don't see it.
It's, uh, Councilmember Davis, this is, uh, this is Graham from the clerk's office. It's, it's both, uh, streamed, uh, from WNIT's Facebook page and then the, the council's Facebook page, uh, shared it as well.
Yeah, I'm on council's Facebook page right now. I don't, I don't see it. I'm sorry. Today's, okay, here, so-
We shared-
You had access?
Yep, that's, yep.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that.
Okay. No worries. Mr. Mayor, would you like to state your name and address and go ahead with your presentation?
Good evening, council members. Mayor James Mueller, and I'm actually in my offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building today. Uh, thank you for the invitation to allow me to provide an update on, on where we are and where we think we're heading, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have, uh, following a brief update. So first, just to remind where we are in terms of the public health emergency, as of today, we have 592 positive cases in our county and 19 deaths. And we've done about 5,531 tests administered as of Friday, and we don't have today's numbers yet in yet. Uh, we still have a long way to go to have, uh, testing capacity more widely. Um, there's the well-documented supply chain issues that, that you've seen, um, across the country and in particular in the state of Indiana. Uh, health officials are working to direct the tests that we do have to maximize the impact, and there was a mobile unit today at Harrison, and there'll be another one at, uh, Mount Carmel on Thursday, and figuring out how do we fill those gaps, uh, in testing sites when a lot of our, uh, medical capacity and infrastructure is not necessarily uniformly distributed across the county. Um, so we'll keep working on that. And then our best tools as of now still are, uh, making sure that everyone is doing their part, individual choices for physical distance, good hygiene, and wearing masks, uh, when, when physical distance is not possible. And unfortunately, our, we're in this, uh, extreme social distancing, physical distancing, um, situation that, that is our best way to contain and mitigate the spread of the virus, and that is generating an economic emergency. Our unemployment claims continue to rise. The good news was the state, uh, at the end of last week, launched the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program, and this is the piece in the, um, the CARES Act that Congress passed a few weeks ago that would provide $600 per week, um, until July for, for those who are unemployed. It all, the other important thing for this program is that people who are not necessarily eligible for traditional unemployment insurance, gig economy workers and others, are eligible for this one. So if you are, if you know of residents that are, um, under tho- those situations, make sure to direct them to the Department of Workforce Development at the state to sign up for the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program. Our small businesses continue to really, uh, take it on, on the chin as well. The, uh, Congress did expand the PPP program, which offered, uh, forgivable loans for two and a half months of, uh, personnel operation costs. And so hopefully, those will be flowing into our community, uh, shortly. We'll be hosting, the city's hosting another Small Business Assistance Fair tomorrow at 1:30, and this is to connect small businesses with, uh, local and, and regional financial institutions to see how they might be able to take advantage of, of these products. The city's CDFI program, uh, is about, or closed applications, or is about to close applications. Uh, you know, it's already, uh, looking to be oversubscribed, and so, uh, the good news is there was a demand, uh, for this type of program. The bad news is I think the, the demand exceeds, uh, what we've been able to do so far. And for council members, this, the, the dollars that came out of this were from 2020 budget allocations for small business development as well as, uh, some redevelopment funds for CDFI-friendly. Um, the good news is we've been working for a couple of years to get CDFI's more visible and, and present in our community, and here they are during the, during the middle of a pandemic, coming to South Bend and helping some businesses get the financing that they need. But we'll need to do much more, um, as we move toward economic recovery and, and reopening the economy. The one aspect of the federal program, PPP program, is that a lot of people may make it for the next few months, but then, as we go into the second half of the year, uh, they're going to need to find more resources, and, uh, we'll, we can't necessarily count on, on the federal government to, to come through. So we'll figure out what we can do here and, and continue to work with our businesses to hopefully keep them afloat and back to thriving, uh, in the next year. Well, a quick update on the, the $500,000 appropriation, uh, for COVID-19 response efforts. Um, so far, we've, uh, just, uh, just, uh, spent or committed them to the, the activities that we talked about, uh, just over a month ago, and that was food access, the isolation site, and daycare for first responders. And of that, the, the food access is, uh, we've allocated $50,000 for the partnership with Food Bank, Cultivate, Real Services, Schools, United Way, and others. And we've delivered, uh, that partnership has delivered 168,841 meals in March and 256,136 meals in April so far. So we've been able, between philanthropic dollars and others coming into play, uh, been able to really increase the delivery, uh, of meals across the community in April, and we see this need, uh, continuing, um, as, as long as, as this crisis continues. We've also assigned or reassigned roughly 30 venue parks and arts recreation staff to help with meal supply and, and, uh, production, because their, uh, their normal jobs are, are not able to be done during this time due to the, the physical distancing requirements. The, uh, isolation site, there's under 10 guests there currently, and it will account for the majority of the $500,000 appropriation, but we are expected to get reimbursed by state and federal sources, um, in the near future. And then finally, the remainder is, uh, providing daycare for first responders in the city so that they can continue to provide the essential services that we need for our residents, but, uh, you know, not have to worry about what's happening with, with their, with their kids. In terms of the fiscal impact of all this, it's, uh, still too early to tell. Uh, we should have more information by the time the 2021 budget process gets underway. Uh, there's, there was the study, uh, by the Ball State Economist that, that showed that our, our, uh, our hit would be roughly $6 million under the, the more pessimistic scenario, and that's actually what we had started to look at internally in terms of what impact to our income tax fund, uh, may come from all this disruption. The, uh, our property taxes will likely also take a hit, hopefully not quite as much, uh, but we do expect, um, some drop in, in revenue collection there. The gas and, and, uh, sales tax at the state level, um, those have fallen off a cliff. I mean, if you go look at gas prices, you see that consumption of gas has gone down tremendously with the stay-at-home orders, and that also is where the gas tax comes from, per gallon of gasoline consumed. So, um, hopefully, there'll be a plan to, to fill some of those, those revenue holes, uh, in the future. But, uh, right now, if you were to say that those have fallen, and who knows what the future for the, the rest of the year will look like, um, but that does impact our ability to get, uh, a share of road funding and, and other, uh, critical revenue for, for the city. And then some of our revenue funds that depend on operations, uh, going, uh, have been hit, and we're continuing to monitor that and, and staffing levels, uh, as well. So we, just going on the staffing, we've, uh, our essential workers continue critical operations, uh, for our residents with physical distancing, safety measures in place. Those who can work from home are directed to work from home, and we have been working to reassign the remainder of staff who can't work from home or are not defined or, or integral to essential operations. And so there have been some hourly workers in venue parks and arts, particularly the, the venues division, that have not been recording hours. They've been using, uh, time, and we'll have to keep reassessing that situation as we go forward. Um, but the, uh, all, that's, all projections here are that those venue-type places may be the last things to, to reopen even when we start reopening. So moving to reopening plan for city operations, we're, uh, working on a plan with department heads to slowly reopen the public-facing, uh, components, facilities, and operations once we're ready to do so. The suspension of water shut-offs that, uh, announced, uh, seems like a very long time ago, will need to be extended past the original eight weeks, um, that we announced. And we are also working to, to look at what kind of targeted economic recovery assistance, um, can we offer as we get out of this, uh, as we get out of the, the closed economy, the closing of the economy and move into economic recovery. Reopening plan in general, uh, the timing is, is not clear. Um, health officials currently think late May, and this is really, there are a number of, of different models in terms of how the, how the virus will spread and, and how it will go. Um, a lot of people have been using the, uh, the model from the University of Washington that's been spread, and that showed a very early peak and a fast drop-off. There are some models that show, um, the peak not happening for a couple of months, and so usually the best estimates are, are the, uh, the averaging of the various models in terms of what they're projecting. And this is something that I can say is, uh, not too far off from when I used to work on hurricane models. There are a bunch of different models. They project a track of where the hurricane's going to go, and usually the best is, is taking the average, uh, of the different models and seeing what that, uh, projects for the track. So, um, so that's one reason, there's a lot of uncertainty in what's happening and, and, and behavior and, and how the virus actually spreads, uh, in different places. And so we will continue to monitor what's happening on the ground and, and use the models to the best, uh, that we can, but, uh, health officials currently are, are targeting mid to late May for the, for the, uh, peak locally. Governor Holcomb, uh, is to update his stay-at-home order on Friday, which expires on Friday, and it's not clear, um, exactly what he will do. Federal guidance has been to wait to, for at least 14 days of declining case numbers before, uh, reopening the economy, and we have not seen that either locally or across the state. Don't have, uh, haven't seen the full projections or, or not projections, the actual hospitalizations across the state, but cases across the state of Indiana have risen four out of the past five days. So the, the thought that we're going to see 14 days of declining case numbers before reopening, we haven't even seen one consecutive day of, of declining case numbers. Now, hospitalizations may be different, and that's a, a more reliable indicator, but in terms of positive, uh, cases, we've been rising as a state. And similarly, here i- in, uh, locally, hospitalizations, uh, still continue, uh, to rise. So, we're not, uh, we're not ready to, to open safely today, uh, due to, you know, where we are in terms of, of the outbreak. And even if we were, we're still not, it's still not safe to open relative to what, what people think we need to have in place to make sure that we avoid a second wave or, or a second wave that's much more, uh, damaging than, than this first one, at least for us, um, here locally. We still have a long way to go, as we mentioned earlier, with testing. Um, some experts have said you need, um, about 150 tests per day, per 100,000. And so in the county, that would be, you know, closer to the 400 or so tests per day. That's the minimum. Um, you know, some, some have said, across the country, we need 2 million tests a day to begin reopening significantly. And that, from a per capita standpoint, that would be about 1,000 a day, um, here lo- in the county. So we've got a ways to go on testing capacity and a lot of supply chain, um, issues there. Um, the governor will address that later this week in, in one of his briefs, uh, briefings. The next piece is our capacity for contact tracing. Um, some have estimated that across the country, we need about 100,000, uh, contract tracers, and per capita, that would be somewhere between, you know, over 50, uh, contact tracers here locally, um, on the ground. And then finally, the, the approach right now where people stay at home, um, in a targeted way where, where the economy's opened up and we're trying to isolate infected individuals, uh, we, you need places to, you can't send them back home where they have other household members to infect. You need to find isolation sites and increase that capacity to prevent the spread. So we're working on a local plan, uh, with the, our Department of Innovation and Technology, along with the Unified Command at, at County Health as we wait for more guidance from the state, and this is another piece that the governor is planning to, to give more guidance on later this week. In terms of, uh, non-COVID-19 related business, I hope we can, uh, start moving, moving other things sooner rather than later, and perhaps, uh, you know, be back down on the fourth floor sooner rather than later, too. As great as these, uh, virtual events are, it's not quite the same. Um, we got a lot of public safety, uh, issues that were on, on our, our agenda coming into the year, and we, we didn't make, uh, those haven't gone away, and those, uh, need to get a lot of attention in the coming months. Certainly, we know roads, uh, are, need a lot of work. We released the, the first phase of the roads plan about a week ago, and, uh, working on that roads plan of how do we get to a place, uh, where we see our roads improving and, and not going the other way. Obviously, with the drop in gas tax at the state level and funding challenges across the board, um, you know, we'll have to revise that plan as, as we see the full impacts on funding, but that's still a priority that we'd like to, to get moving on. Schools, I know we, right, right as this hit, uh, the council was going to have a committee meeting on, um, a schools resolution, and hopefully, we can get that moving again, um, in the next few weeks about how to, really following up on the historic meeting from February with, uh, school board and, and council members and seeing how to move that, uh, forward. Um, economic development, thankfully, even there is a lot of uncertainty in terms of what the market's going to do, what the economic conditions are going to be. There is still, there are still a lot of parties interested in moving forward and making investments, and so want to make sure that we're able to facilitate those. And then finally, something that I know all council members and I share alike are starting that next chapter in our neighborhoods and seeing how we make progress there. So with that, would, open it up to any questions you have.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, if we are sitting in council, I would start from my, uh, far right, uh, with Councilmember Rachel Tomas Morgan. What we're going to do is two minutes per, I mean, two questions per council. We'll walk, walk it down the line from the right to left, uh, get down to councilperson Lori Hamel, Hammond. Let her ask two questions, then follow back up with two, and then come back down. We'll just go back and forth, uh, up and down the line until, uh, all questions are exhausted. Um, this way, every council member gets a chance to participate, uh, in the conversation. So, um, Ms. Tomas Morgan, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, President Scott. Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment to thank you for your leadership during the, these difficult times. Um, I know you or any of us who were running for office last year, uh, wouldn't have imagined, uh, that we would be in this situation. So I, I really appreciate your leadership, um, in this, uh, during this pandemic, and, um, and thank you for your service. My question is around, um, unemployment in our, specifically in our city, and if you could share with us, um, what that picture looks like? What are statistics, uh, with regards to unemployment filings in our city? And then, secondly, um, you mentioned, um, you mentioned some of the gaps you were seeing in the federal stimulus funding. Um, but can you say, uh, anything more specifically in terms of the ways you see us helping to, um, to fill some gaps or, um, to help supplement that funding moving forward?
Sure. So the, the first question on unemployment, um, the breakdown of, of state data from Department of Workforce Development hasn't been released for the month of April yet. So the, the full picture, we'll know, I, I believe, mid to, to late May in terms of that breakdown. But we do know that across the state, there's over a, a half a million, uh, of unemployment claims before, by mid-last week, and that would translate if we assume we're getting hit just as hard on average as the rest of the state. That translates to almost, uh, 8,000 here, um, in our community, and with the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program that has expanded eligibility, um, you can, you, we can expect that to, to rise in the, in, it's just started on Friday, so, uh, you know, rise in the next few weeks. So, I mean, we're talking about somewhere between 10, the, you know, just like the projections that people have been fearing right now. We're talking about somewhere between 10 and 30% unemployment of, of the eligible workforce. So it's, uh, it's an enormous impact. Uh, when you, when you think of reopening the economy, it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer because now, uh, the essential parts of, of, uh, the economy account for roughly 40% by some estimates. So even now, in all of these shutdown or, or stay-at-home orders, the, uh, about 40% of the economy is going, and then about 20% of workers are able to do work from home, uh, at a reasonably same level as, as what they're able to do in the office setting. And so, so really, we're, we're starting right now, we're, we're at about 60% ,um, economy going. Then there are those who can't work from home and, and aren't, uh, deemed in the essential industries, and those are certainly trying to figure out how to, how to plug them back in. But, um, so when we're talking about reopening, that's the, I mean, that's why we see this great impact is there is this large percentage, uh, of folks who just can't work from home and aren't in essential and, and everything's, uh, closed. Uh, so that's something, you know, we've got to turn around as soon as we, we begin the, the recovery and, and reopen. And then, uh, the, the second question, terms of assistance, I mean, this one's tough because, uh, the federal government's the only one who can, uh, print money, uh, in, in this situation, whereas the states and the local governments, we're facing hits, uh, just, just like businesses, just like, um, just like folks at home in terms of, of getting revenue. And, and so it's hard, we have even less, we have a greater need for a lot of things with even fewer resources. So we've really got to be targeted there. Um, so after, I mean, the most important thing in terms of, uh, upcoming investments that we're looking to do is make sure, one, shore up our essential, uh, service workers, and, uh, second, make sure that- And second, make sure that we are able to get a contact tracing and testing and, and all of that up and running so that the economy can, you know, so that the economy can get going again. And we do expect, although we don't have confirmation yet, that should be able to be covered by state funds, but we haven't had a lot of clarity there yet. And, you know, time is of the essence. If we do think, you know, let's just say even, you know, let's just say that May, late May projection is right to be ready to go, to get all these contact tracers and testing capacity ready to go. We've got a lot of work to do. And not, you know, we, we do, we will have to start taking some steps without maybe even knowing the full state funding picture. But hopefully, the governor will provide more clarity later this week on that and make sure that, that we, we're ready when, when we're ready to reopen. So, that's, and then in terms of, we do know that the, like I said, the, the suspension of water shut offs, extending that, that'll, that'll lead to revenue losses for the utility that we'll have to cover somehow. Those are losses. And then we know that the, the states or the governor's delay or suspension of evictions. We know that when, when that is lifted at some point, then we will be facing a lot of folks in dire straits that we've got to figure something out for. But like I said, we're, we have fewer resources than, than normal times, given some of the impacts to, to our government. So, we've got to be very careful about where, where it goes and how it's spent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Morgan?
I yield my time to my way to a council.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll move on to Mr. Warner.
Thank you, President Scott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I, I want to thank and commend, we have hundreds of city employees out there who are still, they're critical, they're still going to work every day through all of this, putting up with very difficult conditions, potentially exposing themselves to additional risk and their families to additional risk. And I, I think I can, I'm always very hesitant to speak on behalf of the council, but I think here I can speak on behalf of the council and say that, you know, we commend them and thank them for everything they're doing. And, and your staff and your administrative team also. I'd like to talk a little bit today, the, the governor mentioned there are 12 safe recovery sites across the state. I assume our site here in our community in Roseland was one of those 12. I'd like to talk a little bit about what, you said so far, we've got less than 10 kind of there. Do we, do we know kind of what that usage will be, if there will be ramp ups there? If we see a peak in two weeks, kind of, how many people do we expect? What would be the capacity there? And then a little bit about what kind of services are we providing there for them at that site, at the Motel 6 there?
Sure. Yeah. So, I mean, this is, we're, we're hopeful. We've actually been fairly lucky, given where the, where the peak is, right? If, if the peak doesn't deviate substantially from where we are today, we're in a pretty good shape. The problem with, similar with the long-term care facilities is these group, group housing environments, once it starts to spread, it spreads pretty rapidly. So, you know, the, the uncertainty here is immense. If we stay at, at kind of the level we are, we wouldn't expect to see an increase much at all. And, you know, people recovering and, and leave the facility and, and new folks may come in. But if, if there is an explosion of somewhere of cases, then it could shoot up unpredictably. So, that's, that's hard to say exactly how that'll work. But we are optimistic. So far, we haven't seen a huge spike for, for that community. I forgot your second question, Troy, sorry.
I kind of asked you about some of the services that we're providing there.
Sure.
And I think my, our, my key question and what I'm getting to is, do we see those costs going up beyond what we've already spent?
Beyond what's out the door, I don't believe the, the budget is, I believe for the 60 days, like we said, is the bulk of that 500,000, though we expect to be reimbursed. So, I don't expect the cost to go up, you know, we're delivering meals to, to the individuals isolated there. We have security and site managers on the, on the site to make sure things are going smoothly. And those are pretty predictable, those staffing costs are pretty predictable and the food costs are predictable. So, we're not expecting, you know, we're not expecting a big change from, from the budgeted amount.
Thank you, sir.
Turn to Sharon McBride.
Hello. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, the question that I have is, are you still having consideration for hazard pay or benefit pay for essential personnel, specifically police and fire?
So, we're, we're always, well, there, there are a lot of pieces that go into, I guess, the, the competitive, we want to take care of our employees, all of our employees and make sure that we're doing right by them. And so, certainly, something always under consideration of what is the right approach to, to make sure that people are compensated fairly and they feel good about the, the work environment that, as best they can. Obviously, there are difficult situations all the time. You know, almost by definition, a police officer is hazard pay, given a lot of the situations they have to go in daily and same with firefighters and EMS. So, something that we'll look at, but one of the, the key things that we're, we're still working through to implement is the CARES Act passed by Congress a few weeks ago, implemented some, some employee sick time for COVID specifically. That would have to be in addition to whatever package we offered. And then also offered FMLA at a reduced rate of compensation for employees who have kids at school and, and can't make it to work. So, those two things, we implemented for the non-essential workers. And we wanted to be careful, we are working to implement the sick time in some way for the essential workers. We just know the, the reason why we have essential workers is they are essential and we really need them to make sure that we're fielding a full team to take on the challenges before us. So, we are working through that piece. And then the, the program to provide daycare for first responders in the city or, or the emergency responders is so that we don't have, you know, folks in, in our essential places that are out for many weeks due to school closures. So, so we're, we're still figuring out how to implement that fully from what Congress put on us. That started at the beginning of the month and, and we'll go from there. So, I would, I wouldn't say, rule it out, wouldn't say, we got to be, like we said with funding, though, we've got to be very careful on our funds and make sure we're, we're doing what, what, what we need to do.
Thank you. And my second question, it's kind of two in the same, but I'll, I'll see how it works out. With the current number of individuals who tested positive for the COVID and the deaths throughout the state and the nation, one, how does it compare, how does our numbers compare in the city and St. Joe County? And the reason why I said separately, because I think that the numbers are just being reported for St. Joe County as a whole. And do we know the distinction between and are we tracking between the city and St. Joe County? And the second part of that is the same, is the specific demographics for the same population of people who have passed away for the communities of color.
So, the, the health department is keeping track of all that data in terms of location there. You know, there's different releases in terms of that information. I'd say, when you, when we're looking in terms, in terms of what they're looking at, even, even the county level isn't full, the full picture because our health systems really do serve the broader region. And so, when we're thinking about how we're doing relative to our health, our health facility capacity, it really is a regional issue. So, if something happened in Elkhart, a big spike happened in Elkhart, that would have an impact on our, on our facilities in our county. And so, they're looking at it, from that perspective, we're looking at it from healthcare capacity and how does, how are we doing as a region? And then in terms of, of looking, I mean, the, the health department is, has identified the, the gaps in terms of communities of color. And that's one reason why they're trying to get more testing out to areas that haven't had the same access to testing. And also, working on, as the full unified command, along with the, the effort of messaging, is figuring out how do we get that message out so that we can, we can reduce those disparities? But one of the things, one of the things that this crisis exposes, something that we all know, you know, access to healthcare is not equal in a normal time. And in a pandemic, it didn't magically get fixed either. And so, working to try to close those gaps.
Thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mayor, from me, two questions. One, is 311 functioning? Are they there? Are they working from home?
They were able, they were able to set it up remotely, so they're working remotely from home.
And I imagine they are taking calls from regarding COVID and passing those along to the right people?
Yeah, they have a, there's a knowledge, you know, what, what in 311 has, there's the, make sure that everyone's getting the, the right message and getting directed to where they need to go. There's, there is a knowledge article that 311 is using to direct people to where they need to go.
Landlord evictions has been an issue. You and I have talked about a, a case within my own neighborhood. I just want to bring it up because I believe other council members have had similar issues. Appreciate Councilmember Nagatsky for providing the hotline to the Attorney General's Office. And I, I will make sure that everybody's aware of that number and be able to pass that along to residents. I know we're getting calls on that. Have you guys talked at all with Attorney General's Office about any issues that have come up? And if not, maybe that's something we need to do too as a county council.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're getting inundated.
Really?
I can't say that we've had a, you know, a, a long conversation with the Attorney General's Office, but we've certainly been referring folks to, it's the Consumer Protection Division within the, the AG's office that is responsible for making sure that the governor's order is, is respected and followed. So, and I, we need to check also when, when that suspension expires. That may be coming up too. So, it was at 60 days, I believe. But anyway, yeah, I mean, that's something that if landlords are not following the governor's order on that, we've got to figure out how to make sure folks are complying because that's critical. We can't be sending people out on the street or looking for housing in the middle of a pandemic and stay-at-home order.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to Vice President Karen White. Karen? Karen White, are you there?
Hey, Karen, you're, this is Graham. You're, you're muted at the moment. You want to check in, see if you're, you can unmute yourself there. President Scott, it does say that she's still in the lobby, but it just says that she's still muted here.
Graham, can you make sure she's out of the lobby?
Oh, I mean, like in the meeting, like she's in, in, in the meeting is, meeting lobby is, I guess.
Gotcha.
I am calling her, if I can get her.
We can come back to Vice President White. I will move to Jake Teshka.
Yeah, I guess first of all, just, you know, thank you, Mayor, for being here and providing an update. Part of the bummer of being this far down the line is some of my questions have already been answered. But specific interest of mine is making sure that, you know, we're standing by any commitments that we've made to our, our employees and it sounds like we're, we're doing the best we can. I know that, you know, we're expecting some, obviously, some financial strain because of this. And, and so, I'd love to see us work to, to make sure that we can, you know, keep our staff the way it is or, or make sure that we're not having to let go of anybody that, you know, that we don't need to at this point. I know you said that we were, I guess, furloughing might not be the word, but folks that were, I think you said hourly folks in the venues division are using their personal time, sick time. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. And, and I will add that we are trying, like similar with the recreation team, helping with the food effort. We are trying to find other duties for, for folks who, who their primary job is not essential and can't be done from home. And there were some, some cases in, I mean, right now, we're mostly talking about the venues division where, you know, the, where the whole, the solvency of the fund is based off of bringing revenue in to, to pay for the staff. And so, so they, we have tried to offer different options and not always, not in every case has that been taken up in terms of shifting to another job responsibility or, or another piece. So, we, we are trying to retain everyone we can and, and reassign them as appropriate. But there are some cases where that may end up not being possible in the end. And then in terms of the venues, specifically, the, the challenge there is, unlike a lot of the other pieces we're talking about, I don't know when we can expect business to really resume at Century Center or the Morris and so forth. And so, those are longer term issues that, you know, we'd of course love to reassign and, and find, you know, different work for them. But, you know, their, their job was contingent on a revenue stream coming in that is going to be difficult for us to count on for some time.
Sure, sure. No, that makes sense. Yeah, and hopefully, again, it's, there's just so many unknowns. I think, you know, I'm grateful for your ability and our ability as a, as a council and, and leadership team to, to be able to pivot when we need to because this is such a fluid situation. And, you know, as it, as it bears out here, we're gonna have to do a lot of, just kind of wait and see and, and make decisions on the fly. And so, again, just appreciate you being here and giving us an update today. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teshka. I'll come back to Vice President Karen White if she's there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, I could hear everyone. So, you know, I don't know what happened. But Mayor James, thank you so much for the update and sharing the information. My first question is that today during Governor's Holcomb's press conference, I believe it was stated that about one-third of the deaths within the state of Indiana due to the virus were residents in long-term care facilities. We know nursing homes have been experiencing an increase in COVID-19 cases. How widespread is that? And do we have a sense of the impact that the virus has had within our city? But also, as I look at our public housing, especially those seniors who live in 501 and 628, those buildings, do we have a sense of the impact that COVID-19 has had thus far?
So, um, the long, long, uh, care facilities are, uh, that's one of the bigger challenges we had when we started the, the, when the Health Department started to prepare for the, uh, you know, the spread of the virus in our community. And they went around and, uh, tried to implement or get the, the facilities to implement the, the best guidance from the CDC in order to protect, uh, our, our elderly. Honestly, I mean, they're the most vulnerable, uh, parts of the population to the, uh, to the virus. And they're also closely, they're in close proximity with each other by design. And so that's got a, a lot of challenges that we've seen across the country, and it's no different here locally in, in South Bend. So, um, continuing to make sure that there are the proper protocols. And, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of it is lockdown procedures and it's, uh, you know, they're not, individuals are not allowed to leave their, their rooms or, or go and socialize or have group meals together, similar to, to a lot of the, the restrictions that, that are in place, uh, for, for us. And then making sure staff, uh, are, are, um, not coming and, and spreading it within, within the system. So that's a challenge. Um, and, you know, there are some asymptomatic people. So even if you do temperature checks before and after a shift, um, you're not necessarily going to be able to prevent every, uh, every case of, of exposure. So, um, that's something, uh, th- those facilities are going to be, they were the first to really get attention as we were prepared for the community. And, and they are likely to be the last to open up when, when we get to, to opening things up just because of, of the, the vulnerability and, and risk factors, um, there. In terms of the, the Housing Authority, we are, uh, the food program is distributing meals to, to some of the seniors in the Housing Authority. Um, and, but in terms of what protocols, we, I, I'm not entirely sure. I know the Health Department, uh, has tried to, to see what, what protocols are in place, but I don't have that answer for you. And, and we can circle back and see what we can get for you.
Okay. Thank you so much. My second question is that, uh, the state has indicated that the state, the state of Indiana could receive 2-point billion in federal relief monies from the, for the COVID-19 economic stimulus, uh, plans. Do you know or have a sense, uh, how, if those dollars are given to the state, what is the process for the city to receive those funds? And what would they look like? And do you have a sense when those funds may become available?
So there are, um, there, there's a, there's a, there were multiple appropriations and this, like this is the CARES Act from a few weeks ago. And so there was the, the stimulus check that every household received. And there were some tax deferments for businesses and things. And then there was the PPP program for small businesses and other business systems. And then there was a host of appropriations, um, I guess is the easiest way to say, of federal agencies. And, and certainly we, we are looking to see how we could tap into those, you know, it's in many ways increasing the capacity of existing federal programs, whether it be HUD, um, you know, housing and, and others. But, so we are looking for those federal funds. And then the states and, and large cities received, uh, some, you know, the, their share of the, I forget what it was, 200 and some mil, or billion dollars. And so Indiana did receive, uh, did you say 2.9? I, I thought it may have been higher. Yeah, okay. Well, roughly $3 billion.
Yes, uh-huh.
The, um, the city of Indianapolis was the only city to qualify by size to receive a direct check. And they received a half a billion dollar, I don't know, maybe, maybe a little bit less. So the, so the smaller cities did not receive, um, anything directly. And the monies that the state received that presumably is to cover, you know, all, all the other municipalities and counties and things has not, they have, it's at the pure discretion of the governor. And it has not been clear how that would be used. But that is where we think funding for, for things like increased contact tracing, testing, and other, uh, measures to, to respond to the COVID-19 spread, um, would come from. And, and we do hope there will be more clarity. There, there is also, there are a number of restrictions in terms of how those funds get spent, including they have to be spent before the end of this year. They have to not be something that was budgeted as of, I think as of the passage of the, the bill and, or maybe just before. And there are a number of other restrictions. So, and if they, if we don't follow those, I, I believe the states actually owe the federal government, um, money back, um, if they don't qualify under those criteria. So, um, I, I imagine what I can sense is that they're trying to figure out how do they, how do they, I mean, how do you make sure the expenses are going to be forgiven by the federal government as opposed to having to be repaid? And then figuring out what is the, what's the right distribution in terms of priorities and also, um, across the state.
Okay. Thank you. And just tack on to that, you know, is there anything that we as elected officials can do to help advocate once, you know, the information is clear and we know what we could, uh, qualify for and what that may look like from your perspective?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to, as the saying goes, the, to the squeaky wheel goes to grease. So we are going to have to, to shout and, and scream probably for, to, to get, uh, to get our share. But it's hard to, it's such a moving target in terms of what's eligible and, and even what, what they're thinking would, uh, would qualify.
Okay. Um, my last question, I'm going to move on and I'll yield to everyone else. Do you have someone within your administration that's the point person or someone you're working with as rep, representatives from our area that can kind of help make sure that, you know, that we get the information and we know how best to respond and the timeframe?
From, from the state side or from?
From the city side in, in regards to really being engaged, you know, at the state level and also making sure that the council is on board and have the information where we can, you know, help facilitate, uh, you know, sharing and the message that we need these funds here as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the thought is we're going to need to do it at the, you know, the broader level in terms of our, our COVID response, uh, group. And so, working with, that's one reason why, uh, the county commissioners and, and, uh, and myself, we, we did sign that MOU with Jeff Ray, is to make sure that we have that, we're sending a, a unified message down to what our needs are and what our costs are. And, and in addition to what our response to the, the pandemic should be. So, um, we, there are things, for example, the local efforts, we're talking about estimating what do we need for testing and contact tracing. Those, we don't have firm estimates yet of what we think that would cost. We're hoping to have those shortly. So we do also need to have, you know, reasonably itemized plans to, to send down and, and hopefully get funded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President White. Uh, we'll move, now move to Councilmember Sheila Nagatsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Um, thank you, Mayor, for, um, giving us all this update tonight. I do have a couple of questions. One of them, you've already covered a little bit, but it has to do with the 50 contact tracers. Um, where are those people coming from? Is that local people that would be hired to perform that task? And who is it that trains, uh, people to do contract tracing? Or is that something perhaps that the state is going to say, here's 50 people and then now you have to payroll them? Or are you even sure, you know, how that looks yet?
We're not 100% sure. That's, that's part of this effort to really scope this out, get the cost and, and what it would look like and who, where we might draw these, these folks from. We also, it sounds like from talking to healthcare providers that we'll need to have people to administer the tests. Uh, if we do get the test, we'll also need people to deliver, administer the test. So there are different qualifications for those positions as well. Um, the challenge too is that contact tracing is, is, uh, you know, it's personal healthcare information potentially at play. Um, and, you know, it's not just training, it's also, um, making sure that we're not, uh, violating any of those privacy components. So, um, there are a lot of, uh, a lot of question marks. I, there, I, I mean, I think the, what, from what we've seen is the, the place farthest along is the state of Massachusetts in terms of, uh, they're talking about a contact tracing, uh, army. And, uh, they seem to be the farthest along, but, you know, we're, in terms of, I don't know anyone in the state of Indiana that's farther along than us, but there are still all these unanswered questions that we hope to be able to provide over time.
Thank you. And my other question, my second question has to do with, um, we're, uh, the protection of workers. And I know it's not the city's, um, place to do this for private business, but has the city thought when you look at ways to help businesses as we come out of, uh, the pandemic and as we come out of, uh, trying to get businesses back to work, a central resource for them for PPE? Um, they may be ready to open up, but can't afford the masks, the gloves, the hoods. Um, that, I think that's an important factor to consider. And I didn't know if that's something that you guys have looked at to maybe, or try and find somewhere locally where we can just have one area where they can, uh, buy those products from without being, um, taken down the road. I mean, some of these things are just outrageous on what they're charging for. And you already have businesses out there hurting. So has that been any type of consideration or something the city could look to partner with to get businesses back up and going?
So that would be something in a, in a normal market, that would certainly be something we could look at. The challenge here is, I'm sure you've seen the articles where the, the federal government is seizing, uh, supplies that are meant, that someone has ordered PPE and they are seizing them. And in terms of, we, I, we're not raising the alarm, uh, yet, but we still have not received our full shipment of PPE that we, um, ordered for our fire department back in February. So before it really, uh, blew up. So, um, we would love, uh, to have PPE available, but we don't have necessarily any greater special access than, than a lot of the, a lot of, uh, other entities across the state. So, um, something to look at, but right now we're, we have our own potential shortage, uh, looming in, in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Ms. Hammond, we'll go ahead with you.
Thank you. Mayor Mueller, I want to thank you very much for all of the hard work that you've been doing throughout this pandemic. I know personally, when I have reached out to you or to anyone else in the city, I have gotten an immediate response. And I just appreciate how hard you and your staff are working. Um, I also want to, um, mirror what Councilman Warner said about the, um, essential workers. And we all pray that they and their families stay safe and healthy. Um, my first question has to do with, um, almost reactionary symptoms or syndromes. We've heard a lot about, um, people's mental health conditions, um, increases in suicides. I'm just wondering, do we have any insights into the state of the mental health of the, um, those that have been furloughed, laid off?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's not just there's the, the stay at home, there's nothing to do. There's, there's, uh, you know, the uncertainty about what's coming and where, where we're headed. And, and then people who are getting the, the stress of furlough or, or losing their job. And, um, the, again, this is another area where we, where, that's being exposed by this crisis is our mental health, uh, capacity and is not probably where it should be in normal times. And, and, you know, now that we have even more, um, need for it, um, again, it, these things don't, you know, like the healthcare capacity or, or infrastructure doesn't magically happen overnight. And, um, that is a tough one because you need to have, I mean, the training and, and the individuals to, to increase that capacity, um, is not a, a quick turnaround. Um, so it takes resources and, and time to, to get to where we need to be.
I'm just thinking that it's likely to escalate as we begin asking people to enter back into the public arena, the uncertainty of their own safety. Are there any, um, any ways that we can offer programming or anything within the city?
Yeah, we can explore. I don't know exactly what those, uh, might be, but happy to explore those and, and see what we can come up with.
Okay. And my second question, um, kind of in the same vein, as we begin opening up and people begin to re-enter into that public sphere, are we able to mandate that customers, um, that everyone is wearing masks? And if we do so, does that require the entity to provide those masks? I'm asking because I know that, um, on the transport buses, not all of the riders are wearing masks and they are unable to provide them. So it just seems to be increasing the risk?
Yeah, I mean, for, for our part, we, we've distributed masks to, to our, our workers, uh, that need them, who can't maintain physical distance across the board. I mean, the, this is why the governor's order is, is so important. The, the authorities that the governor has under the emergency powers, uh, in, in the Indiana code are much more flexible than the pieces that cities have or, and the mayor in, in particular with the council, um, continuing approval is mostly in terms of enforcement is limited to those travel advisories because it was designed for, you know, blizzards and floods and, and other things. So the, the actual authority that, that, that the city and, and I have as the executive of the city is not as wide-ranging other than that travel, um, piece. Now, the Health Department has, uh, a number of authorities that we could, we could look at, um, working with them on if the governor doesn't, um, you know, continue different, different things. But ultimately, this is, there's not, unless the governor extend, which he could do too, unless he extends, um, unless he extends those, you know, some of his authorities from the state statute down to the local level, um, we don't, we don't have the tools fully, uh, to do things like that, mandate masks, for example.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Lori, we'll come back with you and then work left to right now, coming back down the line. So Lori, you get two bonus questions or to start it off.
Okay. Um, well, the last thing I wanted to bring up and, um, it's going to be so important as we are, um, trying to get back on our feet, to, um, really encourage people to patron, be patrons of our local businesses. And I wish I could pull that bi-local resolution back because it's really just, um, it happened right before all of the closures. But, um, I guess my question for the mayor would be, what department within the city would be able to, um, partner with the council in an attempt to try and, um, move this bi-local resolution forward so it can actually help to bring additional revenues to our businesses that will be reopening?
You mean, kind of like a, a marketing campaign or something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of, well, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind and when we think of our, our rest, our independent local restaurants and, and, uh, other services, that, that DTSB has, has really been the lead from the, the city, um, side of things, connecting the city and, and our, our businesses. And it goes beyond just downtown. So the city and, and our, our businesses. And it goes beyond just downtown. So I, I mean, I would think they would need to be a part of it too, that is responsible for helping businesses. Although, marketing has never been a, never been a charge of the Department of Community Investment, other than marketing the city at large.
Okay. Thank you. And those are the last of my questions. So again, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hammond. I'll turn to Ms. Nagatzky, two questions.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing, just going back to worker protections. You know, when we look at our grocery workers are on the front lines, as Councilwoman Hammond was saying, you got your transport bus workers. And then just in general, getting our economy back as far as the city. If you were to get some of those funds from the state, I would just hope that we can maybe leverage in some way, PPE to people if they want to have a mask, if a business wants to protect their workers, but they can't afford a $500, $500 for 200 masks. You know, that's what the going rate is out there for some of that. It's just going to be pretty expensive. And I think we need to make sure that our, our workforce is safe. So I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I, I'm, I'm big on, I, I believe everybody should feel when they're going back to work, that they feel safe going back to work. And although I realize it's not the city's responsibility, I think we should do all we can to help protect workers, especially the workers that, some of our lowest paged workers, that are some of our most critical ones now. So I'm just a little passionate about that worker safety. And again, just hope that we can somehow leverage funds to, to help that happen.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that would qualify under, under any of these guidelines to make that available.
And one other question then, in reference to the, I was thinking about the 50 contact workers. And you, as far as our locals, like you have Bethel College, you know, they have a nursing program. Perhaps there would be some thought into pulling some of those students that may be a year out from graduating that got hampered. Maybe that's a workforce that we could help cultivate right here in our community and keep those jobs local.
Yeah, that would be the goal. I don't think it would work, I mean, if every community is going to be looking to hire a fair amount of contact tracers. So I don't think there's going to be, it's going to have to come, the solution are going to have to come locally. Otherwise, I don't know how it would work.
Then I would, I guess you'd be able to leverage if the, the governor gives us some of that money. I would think that that would qualify definitely as a COVID-19 dollars you're leveraging.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for all the work I know that you guys have done for the city and appreciate all the efforts keeping our community safe.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nagatzky. We'll move to Jake Tushka.
Yeah. So something that I'm just thinking about here, and you kind of hit on it, right? The difference between what the governor's powers are and what the local powers are. I know that, you know, there was kind of a, a big deal made of, at last week's press conference, the idea that, you know, even if the state, the state stay-at-home order stays, is being lifted on, on the first, and, you know, you and others during that press conference said that, you know, locally, we might not be ready for that. What's really, I mean, there's the travel advisory, but, but how would you, I mean, how would, how would you enforce something like that? Or what would that look like if, if the governor's stay-at-home order is lifted?
Well, I mean, as I said on, on Friday, we, so far, what we've seen from the governor is that he's paying attention to data and he's following the advice of health officials and experts. And May 1st, like the, I'm looking at the numbers and I don't have the hospitalizations across the state, but they, the number of cases has gone up for the last five days. So if there's 14 days of decline before you open up the economy, I don't know how, I don't know how he could justify a broad reopening of the economy based off the, on, based off the data I'm seeing. So, or that, you know, that is out there. So we're looking to, to follow the, our health officials and, and the data. And there will be, there could come a time, I don't know that there will be, but I, I hope not, but there could be a time where our health officials and the data suggests one thing that we need to, you know, perhaps stay closed a little while longer. And, but if, at some point, if the state of Michigan, the state of Illinois, and the state of Indiana opens up, even if the data suggests at some point, I mean, if we're not on an island, we can't, we can't necessarily have that impact all by ourselves. So we will have to continue to monitor what, you know, the, the rest of our states doing and what our neighboring states are doing. And as, as we look to what's happening on the ground from hospitalizations and what the health experts are recommending. But I'm, I'm hopeful and, and there's no reason to doubt at this point, given how the governor has handled the situation so far, that he, he won't be looking, he'll be looking at the data and, and make decisions accordingly. And, and I think that would suggest that a lot of these restrictions would remain in place. But in terms of what is Plan B, it's not good. I mean, it's not, we don't have, like I said, the same, the same powers that, that he does. The health, the health department officials here could impose some things. But, but, I mean, so even if the governor on Friday decides to open something, I mean, even if he starts the process of reopening, it's not going to be opening everything. You know, I can't imagine gatherings, large gatherings are going to be lifted for quite some time and, or, you know, other, other places where spread would happen more quickly. So it really depends on how he starts to reopen and, and what we might be able to do to supplement that. But there's no good answer there. I mean, that's the, that's the reality. We need, we need and, and hope that the government, or the governor continues to, to follow the data and public health experts.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice President White.
Oh, thank you. I just want to thank the mayor and his administration, public safety, first responders, and everyone that is really doing all they, they can to ensure that our city is safe and that we have the basic needs that we need to have during this very critical time. We're at a very awkward position from a city perspective, for example. And I agree with you, Mayor James, that hopefully the governor will look at the, the data and look at what's happening. Because according to Dr. Fox, when he was on the TV show this morning, we've not reached our peak for this area. So hopefully he will be looking at that and will not necessarily lift the stay-in-place, you know, executive order. But if that happens, then what would be our plans? How would we respond as a city? And how would, and you could engage the, the council as well as these plans are being developed? How would the council, should the, I mean, at what point would the council be involved in some of those discussions? Because, you know, the residents are calling us as well as businesses too. So we want to be in a place that we can respond appropriately.
Well, I mean, as, as you know, the, the best tool that I have as mayor is the travel component. And, and that requires continual, I mean, there are different levels of advisory, but if we were to make that stricter and continue the local emergency disaster that involves a lot of council input, we'd certainly love to have council input because on this, if the governor does, were to do, you know, lift it pre, you know, what our health officials deem prematurely, that's going to put a lot of pressure on all of us because everyone wants to open. I mean, I, you know, I'm tired of, I'm tired of not seeing people too, and tired of not having things to do and seeing my friends and family. So the pressure of coming down to reopen will be immense if, if that were to happen. So we would need to figure out a place where we felt comfortable that, you know, we could sustain. And ultimately, a lot of these things depend on, on people. People, you know, most compliance with, with any law is voluntary and, and it's people deciding to do it. And so, and not necessarily a punitive or, or an incentivized approach. So we've got to make sure we're on the same page, have the same message, and, and win the hearts and minds of, of our residents. This is why we need to do this, you know, perhaps a little while longer in order to protect lives and protect our community.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, this is President Scott. Yeah, I'm concerned about everybody, our residents. And right now, I'm, you know, not disregarding any of our residents, I'm, I'm thinking of our businesses as well. If this gets pushed out into June, you know, worry, I'm worried about how many businesses will not be able to make it once it gets into, you know, May, possibly even June. I hope we're talking to the governor about that, any type of stimulus program they can do, as well as our elected officials at the federal level too. So just, just a thought on that. I'm sure you're in agreement.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's all I have. With that, I'll move back to Sharon McBride.
Hello.
My question would be regarding the testing sites. Although we have increased the number of testing sites, how is the capacity, like the turnout, are we meeting that 400 number? Or is the word not getting out? Or like in our different communities, that the council can do something about that? But trying to see what our numbers are looking like at the different testing sites.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll have to check. I don't know how it went today. I believe there's been fairly good turnout out there. And, and the challenge that we've had is the, we don't have as many tests as we need generally across the community or where we, where we need to get to. So I will have to get back to you on specifically how it went today and how, what we need to do to make sure that Thursday's at Mount Carmel is well attended.
Actually, thank you. Can you hear me? Actually, that goes into my second question then. With the lack of testing, is it due to the shortage of supply? Or is it a lack of funding that we need to be able to purchase tests?
It's, it's mostly a supply chain issue. So there's, I mean, if you think of the, everything that goes into, to the main test with the, the swab, the long swab that goes deep, deeper than anyone wants. There's the, what they call the transport media that, that keeps the, the sample safe until the lab is able to test it. For example, in Indiana, the, one of the big pieces is, you know, we can't, there's not enough swabs. So they have enough of the other components. We have laboratory testing capacity. There's dollars there available for it. And, and there's just that bottleneck in that piece of the supply chain. And so these are things, different supply chain issues are, are happening across the country. And this is why you see the debate of whether, why people are asking for the president to invoke the Defense Production Act to make sure that these issues can get resolved and coordinated so that we can ramp up testing to where we need to be to not only contain the current outbreak, but make sure that it's safe to reopen when we do.
Okay. And lastly, sorry, I'm gonna take him, your question. Are we, have we started doing antibody testing? And with that, when we talk about phasing in, have we thought about essential workers being tested?
So the, well, I don't know that we have a large supply of antibody testing. And what we've seen so far, and this would be, we'll have to get the public health officials' views on this to, to share with you. But so far, there's not evidence that the, that there's immunity built up necessarily. Not saying that it isn't, but there's not the evidence that would make people feel comfortable that this, if you did have antibodies, you would be immune. And there's also a lag, right? So right now, there, there's, there's a lag when, when the antibodies are present from, from when you're infected and contagious. But again, that's, that's a medical issue we can get more clarity, clarity on as we go forward.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Warner.
I know my last one was going to be testing that kind of got dumped. We dug into some. No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Mayor Mueller, thank you. And thank you to your team. I have like, just a couple of quick questions. One is a bit different than all the other questions. But how are you doing mentally, physically, spiritually? How are you doing?
I think I'm doing better than a lot of people because, you know, I, I still, I'm, my plate's full and, and I'm working on, on all of these things. So, you know, as opposed to some people stuck at home, not knowing what to do with themselves, I don't have a lack of things to keep me busy. So I think that's been helpful, at least for me, to stay focused on the task at hand and, and keep moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I know, this is a point of exhaustion. I know that there's probably a lot of people asking questions and asking for this or that, and which is reasonable, you know. But you're only one person, just as well as everybody else that works with your team or in your administration. So I just thought that I would ask, you know, how is everyone doing? You know, even the council, how, how are you doing? I mean, I have a 11-year-old at home and he, he's quite active, you know. And, and so this house gets smaller every day, you know. And so life, you know, takes on a different tone, you know, mentally. And, and those are questions that, you know, that, you know, that were being asked, you know, just people in their mental state and how we are doing as elected leaders in the city, being asked questions, not able to answer questions definitively, and hoping and wishing that we could do a little bit more than we can do. But obviously we are, you know, capped at some levels. It's all just, you know, how are you doing? And, and, you know, and how's the team doing? And how's everybody else doing? You know? Just a wellness check, brother.
Yeah. Well, so don't fear, we're, we're doing, the team and, and I are, are doing well. I, I will say, we, we share a lot of the frustration when we look and see we, we need things that happen at the state and federal levels. And we wish there was a, we wish there was a more coherent strategy that we were driving from the top down because that would simplify, not simplify, but make things a lot easier in terms of how do we navigate all of these different things as individual cities and individual states.
All right. Well, my last question, and you know, this is just, you know, as simple as it is, how can I or my colleagues help you out any further in this, you know, pandemic? Is there anything more that we can do to support your office?
Well, the, I mean, the most important thing, and that's, we, we've got to figure out how to, how to get this across. And especially as, as the temptation to, temptation to get back to normal becomes even stronger, is we've got to figure out how to make, get people to realize what, what's at stake here. to realize what what's at stake here and why we're not out of the woods. And and there there will likely be a second peak here. I think everyone is expecting that. And and we've had a fairly reasonably controlled first peak, at least so far. The second one could, you know, we can't let the second one catch us by surprise. And we've got to we got to stick with different, different things that the health officials are recommending. So figuring out how to get that message out to across the community, because it really only works if some of these things only work if everyone does them, or most people do them. And so getting that message out. And then, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have our hands full in the 2021 budget season and figure out the economic recovery in short order. So those are the pieces, you know, let's stay, but let's first try to mitigate the spread of the virus and get the right information out. And hopefully we'll be able to get, hopefully, the weekly updates from from Jeff and and other weekly check-ins are able to empower you guys to have the information to to deliver to the residents.
Thank you, sir. And God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, President Scott. It's back to me, full circle again. I, Mr. Mayor, there's maybe one population that we haven't talked about in full, and that's our homeless population in South Bend. And we've we've certainly invested in the quarantine site and to isolate persons who are homeless, if they test positive, or while they're waiting for their test. Do you foresee any other additional concerns coming with that particular population and potentially other assistance that may need to provide?
Yeah, I mean, this, it's a good question. And it's similar to a couple of the other earlier ones. We've had, we've had some some challenges figuring out housing for for our chronically unsheltered community members over the past few years. And that didn't get resolved because the pandemic hit. We are in talks with some of the service providers about how can we help facilitate social or physical distancing in terms of meal provision and other services. And then, when you think of sheltering, you know, group group sheltering is not necessarily the safest either, as we find out in in all of the group facilities. So there's challenges that existed before the crisis are still here. And we are trying to figure out how we can mitigate to the extent possible, the spread of the virus, and as we look to the long term solutions that have been under discussion for some time.
Thank you, Mayor. And then, my final question, and maybe last comment is just, we know that we each play an important role in in putting on the peer pressure and, you know, with with friends and and family to stay in, to stay safe, because we know that saves lives. And so, you know, going back to what the governor may do this week, I just want to take a moment to remind our residents that it was it was us here in South Bend, and and you who had issued the local disaster emergency, even before the governor had put forth a stay at home order. So ahead of the curve in that way. And so, in a similar way, should the governor lift a stay at home order for any reason, and we hope that that doesn't happen, and we hope that we as elected officials aren't in that position. I want to I just want to offer my my support and and commitment to to being supportive in what we need to do to keep our our community safe. And that means extending, looking at powers that we have here to, you know, continue to extend that local disaster emergency at the watch level. I want to work to, you know, keep keep our city and residents safe, if that's what that takes.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, anything else?
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come back down the line. Any other questions? I know Vice President White had.
I've got a few comments. Are we going back in order? Would Councilman Davis be next?
Yeah, we can do that. Mr. Davis, anything else?
No, I don't have anything else to talk about, man. Y'all go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, President Scott. Yeah, I think as we go through forward, I think, you know, jobs, obviously, as we've said, it'd be a massive issue here with unemployment. I know you guys are doing anything you can do to get federal funding and state funding. I would encourage you to come to the council with ideas or requests for funding to any kind of jobs programs, things that the city can help at that level with. I know, I encourage you to do that. I want to thank you and your team for all your work you're doing. I know this is, it's very difficult, very tricky stuff, that changes kind of minute by minute. I also, I was at the on the Parks Board meeting, the Zoom, the Teams meeting, but had a phone call. I wanted to commend Aaron Perry and the work that they are doing, coordinating with the Food Bank, Unity Gardens, and Cultivate Culinary. Food security is obviously, as we've seen in the numbers, has become a huge issue very quickly. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of our community missed one paycheck, and it was very damaging to their stability, to their food security. I've been to the Food Bank twice in the last three weeks. I'm amazed at the volume that they're cranking out, the number of meals in the boxes, and the line that goes all the way around and up to Western Avenue and down Western Avenue. And so I commend you and your team for being on top of that right away. And keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Ms. McBride, anything else?
Thank you so much. No, I just want to say thank you to everyone, all the essential workers out there, our community, and constituents who are practicing this distancing, and condolences to anyone who has lost anyone to this terrible virus. You know, it's a trying time for us, but we'll all get through it together. But I appreciate everybody and the hard work that we're doing here. And thank you again to the mayor. And bless everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sharon. Vice President White?
Okay, I was saying that I wish to thank everyone, the council, the administration, the mayor, everyone within the city of South Bend. When you think about what we are experiencing and will continue to experience for a period of time, the statement has been stated that we're in this together, and that has never been so true. As we begin to look forward, and I was giving some thought to especially those who have lost loved ones, and they've not even had the opportunity to properly go through the grieving process. And, you know, as someone had asked about the mental health and the need for that, I think that is going to be very critical. And as we think about phasing out, you know, what is that going to look like? We did not talk about a lot about the neighborhoods. And I'm very concerned concerned about those neighborhoods that are struggling, families that are living from paycheck to paycheck, what that's going to look like, and what is our role as a city and as a council. But also, as I begin to look at the minority businesses and the impact that will have on them. Again, the planning is going to be critical. We know that there's a lot of information that we just don't have, you know, as things are being committed at the national level, and then to the state level, and then we, at the local level, what does that look like for us and for the citizens that we've been elected to serve? So I think the most important thing that we can do, one is to listen, to make sure that we are engaged with each other, that the conversation is open, that we ask those critical questions, and that once we move to the next phase, as you have stated, Mayor James, that, you know, there's consistency with the message, we understand what the message is, and we understand our responsibilities as elected officials to work very closely with the administration and with other entities, to make sure that when we come out of this experience, that we'll be in a better position. Thank you.
President Scott, can I speak of the attachments and links that I sent to council briefly?
Very quickly.
I've sent a link to everyone from the COVID response team, and would be doing so every week. In that link, it's a self check checklist that was sent. Thank you, Aaron Perry, for sending that out. If you look on it, it is English on one side and Spanish on the other side. We're encouraging people for you all to send it out to your constituents, faith leaders. And that information talks about calling 211, and it asks you a series of questions about your mental health, and different things in that nature. And there's people out there, resources, to be able to talk to if you're having difficulties during this time. So I encourage you, the information that I send, if you start looking at it and printing it out, you could start distributing that information as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Teshka, any final comments or questions?
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nagodsky, any comments or questions?
No, I believe that my fellow council members have pretty much covered everything as far as the administration, our public service workers, just everybody in our community. We are all in this together. And I do believe that food insecurity is going to be a major issue as we start climbing out of this. But I know that we'll all be working together to make sure that nobody in our community goes hungry. That's all I have. And everybody be well, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nagodsky. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. I just have one additional thing. I want to acknowledge a group of unsung heroes, which would be the parents that are not only trying to work from home, but are doubling as teachers. It has been a very difficult and trying time for these individuals. And I know that we all know someone that is trying to do this double duty from home. Again, we they need our support. They need our patience. So whatever we can offer to teachers and to the parents that are at home trying to teach their children, I hope that everyone will reach out and offer what they have. And that will be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammond. My final words again, I can't thank you all enough, this council, for their sincerity and their their concern for our citizens, our businesses, everything that's going on around this. You know, we're losing lives, and we don't want to do that. And we don't want to see that continue. Mayor, and your staff, it's been a hell of a hundred days. So, you know, hopefully, you can take a breath every now and then, and gather yourself. And we appreciate all the work that you're doing. I'll also refer to Vice President Karen White and Chair of Personnel and Finance, I think. She and I have talked about the budget, you know, priorities that she's put out to all the council members. I know my priorities are changing. And it goes along a lot of lines of everything that every one of these council members have said. Mr. Warner kind of hit it on the head of what are we looking to do to make sure businesses and jobs are back for our residents? And that's something that we're seriously going to have to consider in this this upcoming budget, let alone the financial implications to all this. So, Mayor, I want to thank you and your staff for all the work and support that you've given us so far, and the response that you and your department heads are doing. Much appreciated. I'll speak for the mayor, and say, please reach out to him and his staff if there's any questions or anything that you guys need. Council members, we will have a directory coming out to you shortly, of department heads and everything within the city. So we can, you guys know who to direct your questions to, so it's pointed and perfectly directed. So, Mayor, thank you so much. We're almost going on two hours. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn the mayor. We'll move down the agenda very quickly. Committee of the whole, there's nothing. Bill's third reading, nothing. Bill's first reading, nothing. Resolutions, nothing. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business for this council at this point? Hearing none. Any new business? Mr. Warner, I think you have something on a new business?
I do. You know, one of the things when I was appointed to the Redevelopment Commission, I kind of promised to keep the council updated on developments. I'm going to speak for Mr. Teshka and I on the Redevelopment Commission. We've had an agenda the last couple meetings, and there were a couple things of interest, I think, some investments in the neighborhoods and communities that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council. On the March 12 meeting, the Redevelopment Commission approved $160,000 towards inclusive neighborhood business development projects, $100,000 of that to go to Majora Carter Group. I know many of the council members attended an event at IUSB that was put on last fall from the Majora Carter, and discussed kind of minority business development and improving the neighborhoods. Then last week, at the Redevelopment Commission meeting, $400,000 was approved for street improvements on Washington, at the intersections of Washington and La Porte, and the intersections of Washington and Chapin Streets. There was also an approval for a a green space lot on, that would be on Prairie, just southwest of Ignition Park, south of Sample Street. The lot is going to be used by Cultivate Culinary, along with Unity Gardens, to grow food for the Cultivate Culinary program. There was a termination clause that allowed the city to get out of that agreement, should the Redevelopment Commission have an interested buyer in the lot. So we're seeing some, most of the projects so far have been improvements into the neighborhoods. It was something that the council wanted to see, and I just wanted to update the council on that. Thank you, President Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, Mr. Teshka, for that update. That's much appreciated and very refreshing. So thank you. Is there any other new business from any council member?
Yes, I would ask, Sheila Niskoski can speak on. Yes, I would ask, Sheila Niskowski can speak on our food drive that we're working on for the Housing Tenant Association.
Excellent. Ms. Nagodsky?
Yes, thank you, Sharon. We have been working with the South Bend Tenant Association. We are both board members. And Mr. Gadsden is helping us to get a food drive together. It's going to be on May the 9th. We haven't got all the sites confirmed yet, but we're looking at, wasn't it five? I believe it's five sites. And what we're going to do is do a drive, gather the food. And as the crisis in housing, as, I hope it does not become a crisis, but as people find the need to have to move or need resources that access the South Bend Tenant Association, we will then be able to provide them with care packages, food, distribute food that people have a need for. So I believe it's an important project. The association itself will be helping with education and advocacy on behalf of the tenants, as well as working with places like Miami Hills, Prairie Apartments, working with both the tenants and the management from both sides to help resolve issues. So I believe it's going to be very much needed as we move forward into the next couple of months. If anybody wants any more information or would like to help donate food for the drive, it is May 9th. Right now, I do know it's Prairie View, Miami Hills. Sharon, do you remember the other locations?
Yeah, it'd be at Marinata Church off of Prairie Street, Western Avenue, Kroger parking lot for the Western tenant tenants, and New Peters Rock off of Vassar. We're doing five locations, and we're also going to be promoting people to fill out the census and also vote absentee ballots. And the reason why it's separate than the regular food banks, it's helping, we have 400 people reach out to us that are currently facing eviction right now. So as soon as this is over, they're having problems with housing and foreclosures. And so we're doing an extra food drive for people who are in dire need regarding specifically the housing.
Sorry, didn't hit the mute. Thank you, ladies, for that update. Is there anything else, new business? I do have some new business for this council. We will, in May, per the executive order by the Governor Holcomb, start hearing normal business from the common, from the city and the common council. So we're going to put together an agenda, so we don't open the floodgates all at once. We're going to ease into this. But if we have, anybody has Bill's resolutions for first readings? I know there's some tax abatements that need to be heard. Those will be a priority. Mr. Warner, I think you want to have the police chief do an update. We can hear that as well. So what we're going to do is collect this week, if you can, share with myself and the clerk's office by Thursday, items for the agenda, and we'll start stacking that agenda for May. Like I said, these meetings are a little tough because everybody has to do roll call. It takes a little bit more time. Also, we don't have the full community input. So please think of that. If there's some things that are cut and dry that we can hear and move forward with city business, that's great. If there are things that have to truly engage the council and the citizens, let's try to hold off on those as long as we possibly can. I know there might be some deadlines with that. Or if individuals have first reading bills that might come up at a later date, they want to file, please do so. Like, I'd also like to mention, please get with committee chairs if you're going to file something that might go in their committee. With all respect to them, please make sure they're aware that something's coming in their committee. Is there anything else?
Council President, this is Councilwoman White.
Yes.
The public, they're able to view our meetings, right?
Correct.
Are they also able to submit questions? And if so, how are they being answered? How are we gathering those questions or even comments?
We, we're going to take the next week and a half and make sure that's done with an efficient way so we can have public input. We'll, I'm hoping before we put out an agenda in basically a week, that we can inform people. You know, the one concern I have is this does limit some of the transparency, not really on the business that we're doing, but allowing people to speak. Not everybody has computer. Not everybody has Microsoft Teams. We want to make sure people are able to be engaged. And the sooner we can get back in our council offices and informal meetings where people can come and engage us, I think that's going to be the better. So in the meantime, we don't want best to be the enemy of better. So we're going to figure out that process this week and be able to start sharing that and maybe doing some rehearsals. Okay, with that, we know privilege of the floor has been postponed. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
Good night, all.
Good night.